Now reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since 6 o'clock to discuss disciplinary matter and contract negotiations. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
We could have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Christine Beck.
Wendy Sampson.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moyerdy.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Willow Bear.
And Judy Kehoe.
First, I'd just like to say thank you to Elsmere and to Ms. Claus for having us here. It's always fun to travel around to the different buildings. Second, do we have any pig students with us tonight? Welcome to our meeting. Your obligation is to stay until 9 o'clock or until the meeting is over, whichever comes first. And when it is done, you can come up, there are sign-out sheets, and if you need a signature on anything that you have, you can ask any Board member. First up is approval of minutes of our last meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 8th, 2020, regular Board meeting.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate tonight? Do we have anybody here from the middle school?
My name is Amelia Kuhn, and I'm in 8th grade at the middle school. The BCMS Student Council is sponsoring our Super Bowl, which provides food items to a local food bank and to our backpack program. The High School Student Senate has helped us begin our backpack program for students, and we are now entering in our third week. January's nominees for this month's BCMS Hero of the Month are in alphabetical order: Lucille Ball, who was an American actress and comedian; Thomas Paine, an American revolutionary; Jackie Robinson, the first African-American baseball player in Major League Baseball; and Eleanor Roosevelt, American activist, philanthropist, and former First Lady. Thank you to all who attended our BCMS musical Frozen. It was another great production. The BCMS annual ping-pong tournament began today, and grade-level winners should be crowned in the next two to three weeks. The BCMS snowflake 8th grade, the 8th grade snowflake dance is on January 31st, and it is not a partner dance. Come with friends, and our theme is "Dress to Impress from Your Closet." This Friday is the end of our second quarter, so most middle schoolers will have a small schedule change beginning next week as we begin our third quarter.
Thank you, Amelia. Do we have anyone here today from Elsmere?
Hi, my name is Eloise. I will be telling you about one of the most exciting things happening here at Elsmere. Buddies, you may have heard of the Buddy Program before, and here at Elsmere, we make sure everyone has a nice, loving companion for the whole school year. We always do fun crafts and computer games to encourage the younger students' learning. Part of the reason we have buddies is so other kids can teach littler kids good manners, being polite, et cetera, good skills and more. We pair 5th graders with kindergartners so they have an older buddy and more elaborate helpers. I love being a buddy because I can help other kids learn, which is one of my favorite things to do. Another reason is they're younger and need other kids to help with handwriting, something that is specific to them, and the teacher can't always pay attention to just one kid with buddies. Every kid has their own helper. I absolutely love the Buddy Program. I've had a buddy for six years, and next year I won't have one, but there's always a chance for change.
Good evening. My name is Juliana Domel. Today, I'm going to be talking about intramurals with our PE teacher on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. I think intramurals is a great program for kids who do not have the opportunity to play organized sports. It is also a great way to start off the morning, to get all of your energy out before school. I love PE, and sometimes I love the lessons so much that I want to do more, and that's what intramurals lets you do. I think this is a great program for students in Elsmere Elementary.
Good evening. My name is May Walston. At Elsmere, we do a group called Heroes. Heroes allows the 5th graders to work with the intensive skilled classes with the kids that have special needs. We get to do Heroes every Monday during recess time. The best part of working with the kids in the classroom is we get to help them, and we also get to learn a lot from them. A lot of the kids from Elsmere are fine with missing recess because they get to work with the kids. It is very inspiring to see how children learn in such different ways. We are so lucky to have a program like this at Elsmere Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Ellie Kwong. Today, I would like to share with you one of my favorite things about Elsmere, which is Makerspace. Makerspace is a time during recess where kids get to be creative and use their imagination. What makes Makerspace fun is that there's something for everyone. It's not all arts and crafts. There are different things, like types, different types of robots or Chromebooks, and if you really want to, you can make your own creations, like duct tape markers with cardboard and duct tape and beads, or a bow with fabric and a stapler. Those are just some examples. Makerspace is very special and an important part of Elsmere. All in all, Makerspace is a great part of Elsmere, and it is one of my favorites.
Good evening. My name is Paisley Sims. Did you know that some great Bethlehem traditions started right here at Elsmere? The Senior Assembly is one of these. It started by Ms. Robin Reed about 15 years ago. As a way to honor former Elsmere students when they graduate from high school, it also helps inspire our current students. The high schoolers share their favorite memories from their time at Elsmere Elementary. We are happy that all elementary schools are now having Senior Assemblies. Lip Sync was also began at Elsmere at least 25 years ago by our speech therapist, Mr. Art Letter. Lip Sync was planned to help all students have the opportunity to work on a team and take part in their performance. Every other year, we enjoy Lip Sync at Elsmere and are glad that students in other schools enjoy the tradition now, too. If you have any other ideas for special programs, please share them with us.
Next, we'll be talking about what Pride stands for. Pride is, has a couple letters, and I will be sharing one of them. P is for personal best, which means doing your best even when someone else is doing better. It's the best for you and only you, and nothing, you can't do better than that.
My letter in Pride is R. R stands for respect and responsibility. Respect and responsibility are very important to Elsmere Pride. They make you a better person and a better learner, and that makes our community a better place.
My letter in Pride is I. I stands for integrity. Integrity means doing the right thing even when no one is watching. Integrity is very important to Elsmere Pride because it builds your character by knowing you should do the right thing even when no one is watching, not the wrong thing.
My letter in Pride is D. D stands for determination, which is never giving up even when things get hard. You can show determination by always trying your best to reach your goals. Our teachers are very determined to teach us everything we need to know. Determination is very important to Elsmere because every kid in Elsmere has determination.
My letter is E, which stands for enthusiasm. Enthusiasm is everywhere in Elsmere. It's in the teachers and especially the students. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you so much for coming to speak to us tonight. Does anyone have any questions? We're working on it. Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say you are all amazing speakers at such a young age, and you should be very proud of yourself that you did a wonderful job this evening. Thank you.
And if you guys want to come up here, we have a little eagle pin for you guys. Come on. So cute. There you go. Thank you for coming to talk to us.
You guys did an amazing job.
Next up is our superintendent's report.
Sure. So first, I'll begin with a construction update, as usual. So the High School LMC is recently stocked. If you've been around there with a lot of furniture, librarians are loading books currently, and our goal is to be open February 3rd. Until then, D-122 will still be available, but once we're open in the library, D-122 will begin renovations directly after that. The High School cafeteria, the B.C. blends open for business. There still continues to be work framing and sheet rock for the snacks area, which will be for grab-and-go food items. The auditorium is on track, continues to be a large, obviously a large amount of work. During the last update, the completion has been delayed by about one and a half months, so right now, we're looking at anticipated end-of-May completion. And we were not planning on using that space, so it won't impact any programs. We're continuing work in the high school bathrooms. We're taking a couple of them at a time, and the A-Wing bathrooms are moving along, and B-Wing will be next. In transportation, there were some concrete floor issues, but that's been corrected, and we are anticipating that the room, the training room will be painted with ceiling installation. Furniture and occupancy is expected again the first week in February. As Ms. Claus had mentioned, there's starting to be some work at Elsmere. Construction is start on the restrooms, February 3rd. Middle school pool renovations, there are four construction contracts that have been awarded, and no work has begun there yet. The pool will be shut down, and work will begin March 16th. And the ribbons in the High School LMC, we saw those, they're currently painted. Mr. Nolte is recommending that we not put the felt on the ribbons. We had talked about this at our Facilities Committee meeting, so any committee members can also comment on that. So that will be something that, that would be a modification, and we would get a credit for that. Also, I want to just mention, we have had some high school fire alarms. One went off yesterday, and we've had a couple others. Mr. Nolte and his staff are working with the contractors to determine if there's any issues, but we don't anticipate the alarms going off anymore this week. And I'd like to congratulate the cast and crew of Frozen. I was able to attend the show Saturday afternoon. I'd like to thank all the parents who were involved. I know that it's a lot of work in putting it all together, and I really am just always impressed with the talent our students have in our production, so congratulations to them. And finally, I'd like to quickly turn it over to Judy Kehoe to just give you some initial information on the state aid runs that came out yesterday.
Thank you. The runs, as Jody noted, were released yesterday evening, and if you were to look at the runs and read the raw numbers, they were somewhat horrifying because they reflected a $779,000 reduction in our aid, largely because the building aid totals were about $1 million less than the current year's aid. So lest you think I'm a broken record, every year, I say we need to review the aid runs and do a careful analysis, and we will make adjustments to those totals when we roll out the budget, and this year is no exception. Through talking, in reviewing the aid numbers, it appeared that all of the aid that will start to flow in this coming year related to the $32 million product, or project, is not included in the aid runs. And we had confirmation late this afternoon from our financial advisors, who had spoken directly with the state aid unit that handles building aid. There is a letter of clarification that will be coming out. Apparently, they changed how they report those totals, and unless the final cost report had been submitted to the state, those totals were simply not included on the aid run. Of course, we haven't finished the project, we can't submit the final cost reports yet. As long as those are submitted by December 31st, 2020, then those numbers will start to flow to us. So I'll be doing an adjustment to the totals that are on the governor's aid run so that our aid numbers accurately reflect the aid that should be coming to us next year. We still need to do additional analysis. There is a change in how several of the other aid categories are reported. While they in the past have been individual line items for things such as BOSI's aid and the high tax aid, those are all being combined into the foundation aid line in the proposed budget. What is reflected there is only about a .38% increase, so that's in line with what we expected. We really didn't think we were going to see significant amounts of state aids, given all of the projections from the state about the magnitude of their deficit. So we will update these totals when we roll out the budget at the second meeting in February, and rumors of a $779,000 reduction are greatly exaggerated. All right, thank you, and that's my report.
Jody, can I just ask a question about bathroom, well, maybe it's a comment about the bathroom work. I'm sure it's too late at this point for the ones that we have under contract, but next time we're looking at bathroom remodels, I just would like to think about single-use, gender-neutral bathrooms in each of the buildings.
We, for the high school renovations, we actually do have two that are planned. They haven't been constructed yet, so the B-Wing bathroom near our offices, there's going to be a single-use, and up in front of the building, it's currently the men's bathroom, right, near the offices, will also be used for that as well.
Just in the high school we're talking about?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Next is our board report. I know since our last meeting, there was both an audit committee meeting and a Facilities Committee meeting. I was hoping maybe somebody could report out on.
Why are you looking at me?
Only because I'm looking left.
No, that's okay.
I can look right, too.
So we did have the Audit Committee, and we went over concussion studies that were done. Wendy couldn't be here with us that evening, I think Willow, were you filling in, or you? No, you weren't there. I'm sorry. Facilities meeting.
I was there with you.
Yes. Jonathan was there, somebody was there with me. But, so that's being addressed, and we'll get some final information on that at a later time. And then we had the Facilities Committee meeting, and we went over some outstanding items with Greg, but everything seems to be coming along nicely. I did have a question, Greg, on the bathrooms. Are we doing anything with the one that's down the hallway behind the auditorium that currently has clothes in it?
Okay. So is that still going to be like the theater?
The school, Jerry?
Just curious if we are revamping that or not.
This is actually rendition of the high school entryway.
Oh, yes, okay.
I asked Ren to just give everyone a copy. We had talked about this in.
The hard entryway. Right. So this was the view for the high school?
Right.
That sort of has a wall. Okay. It's part of the presentation, right?
Okay. Jonathan, did you have anything to add about? Pretty out of bed.
Just that with regard to concussion, I'm just thrilled that we did that particular audit, because as all good audits show, there are things that we need to do and improve on. We have a plan, and I really look forward to seeing what happens next, because it's another way that we're protecting our students and some things that, you know, were overlooked because of either lack of communication or lack of knowledge. But now we have what we need, and I'm much happier about where we're going forward with that. And as far as facilities go, I'm delighted we're not putting the felt on, because I was very concerned about the amount of dust that that felt would attract. And it's going to be hard enough to clean the ribbons. We just didn't need that addition to grabbing, you know, no matter how good your filter is, it's not going to be good enough to keep the dust off the felt. So that's pretty much it.
Just to add on to Jonathan, he brought up the suggestion on the felt, not putting the felt on. But Greg, at the same time, there was problems with the design, so they thought that it would be more effective not to put the felt on, save them money, because it really wasn't going to add much to the design, and we thought it'd be easier for the vents and the cleaning just to leave it in the painted form. So it worked, it worked out, but Greg had to go back to the vendors and make sure that we could get a credit for that, and that worked out.
Does the lack of the felt affect the sound dampening?
Well, the felt in the library, it was aesthetic only, right?
It was just aesthetic?
Yeah. It was just part of the whole design. Yeah, the design ambiance.
You're not supposed to need sound dampening in a library. It's supposed to be quiet anyway.
It was a design that was good in theory but hard to implement, so they changed it as we went. And then with the concussion, what was really good, we walked out of the Audit Committee, which is really kind of funny, because we never walk out of the Audit Committee thinking, wow, this was really great. And it was a really good conversation about how concussions are handled and the different steps and bringing awareness and that there's committees looking at it and making sure that the protocol's appropriate, so that we make sure when kids have a concussion and they're going back out to play, that they're going to be safe. So it was good. It was really something that was helpful and interesting to see how each building did it a little bit differently and to kind of get some consistency in the process across all of the buildings. So it was definitely helpful.
Great.
And interesting.
And to be clear, we're doing a lot of things right with concussions as well.
Oh, yes, yes. I didn't say we did anything wrong.
The nurses and coaches are doing a lot of things right also.
Definitely doing things right, and I think what this showed was that we can do a lot of things right, and also miss a couple of things, and it gives us a way to fix those things and do even better.
Absolutely.
And just coming from an auditor's perspective, it's an internal audit, so it's to help improve the processes, so it's not really saying that we're doing anything wrong, it's just to make it even better, so that, to Willow's point. That was a good point, Willow.
Anybody have anything else to report?
I attended the play, it was, the musical, rather. It was wonderful and very enjoyable. I went with my daughter, because my wife was out of town, so that was also enjoyable.
We also attended Frozen. My kids are still singing the songs. God help me, but the show was wonderful, as it always is. I also attended some of the 4th and 5th grade orchestra and choir at Hammergrau. Both were really just examples of when you set expectations, the way that our students are able to really work to meet those expectations. An impressive week of music and theater.
I also attended Frozen, Frozen and at the middle school. I thought the kids did wonderfully. I'm so impressed with the amount of time that each child had to put into that production, but also wanted to say thank you to all the parent volunteers, not only for working on the actual production, but even just the scheduling and bringing their kids back and forth for many, many afternoons and evenings. So thank you to you all, you did a great job. Anybody else?
Just, I attended Frozen, too, and congratulations on your middle daughter being Elsa there. Was she middle or your older? No, she's middle. Yeah, so she was middle Elsa and your middle daughter, so she did an awesome job. The kids worked really hard. It was, it was really nice. It was very nice.
Musical was wonderful. Went Thursday night and really enjoyed it. Caper at Hammergrau a couple weeks ago was awesome, where I actually got my two boys to sign up for the next one to read. We've become huge Bethlehem basketball fans, so we were there last night, watched the Eagles beat Shaker, so that was a great win. And next week, next, I believe it's next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, at least definitely Tuesday and Wednesday is Math and Science Night at Hammergrau, so if you have kids at Hammergrau, sign up and we'll see you there.
Next up is our presentation this evening on safety and security at Bethlehem, presented by Ms. Claus and Mr. Nolte.
So I want to start by asking you to think back to your days when you were in school and try to recall what occurred regarding school safety and security. You probably had fire drills, maybe a few were in school in the '60s, you had the duck-and-cover air raid drills or tornado drills, like I did growing up in Michigan. But did you have lockdown drills or evacuation drills? Were the doors to your school locked, requiring visitors to be buzzed in and screened? Did teachers wear identification badges to make it clear which adults had permission to be there in your schools? Did you learn how to take care of your own mental health and how to help others around you? Probably not, but, you know, a lot has changed in our world, and along with it, a lot has changed in our schools. So tonight, Greg and I are going to talk to you a little bit, give you an overview of what some of these changes have been in our school. While some pieces have grown gradually, in the past five years in particular, have seen the organization and development of numerous measures to enhance school safety and security. So within the schools, we have district and building-level teams, which help to plan safety trainings for school members, address safety measures, and provide reports to the state, and address the overall safety of the schools. The teams work in conjunction with the expertise of school resource officers, local and state police, and BOSI's safety specialists. In addition, our staff and students provide insight and feedback to safety teams to make our buildings safer places. Our safety teams have been trained using the Incident Command System model to effectively organize and coordinate our efforts in emergency situations. In any situation, there are variables that we can't control for, so everyone is encouraged to first and foremost assess the situation, remain calm, and use their common sense. However, when we practice in dealing with situations, it gives us a standard procedure to begin to respond to emergency situations. And the practices include shelter-in-place drills, hold-in-place drills, evacuation drills, lockdowns, and lockout drills, and they're practiced throughout the year in every school. We also practice mass evacuation drills, where we relocate to a different setting, sometimes using B.C. transportation, which also has safety drills as well. We've started practicing reunification drills in case we can't return to our school building. Safety teams have run through tabletop exercises to discuss building-specific responses to various scenarios, such as power outages or a tree across an entrance to the school. And in the summer, our local and state police have practiced active shooter drills in our high school. And most recently, along with the AED machines, we now have stopped the bleed kits to equip and train bystanders with the expertise to assist in severe bleeding emergencies, which could occur in various situations in and out of school. To further increase safety awareness, these reminder posters are around each school building, and following each drill, we also send out information regarding the drill to parents so they can reinforce safety messages at home. Okay, I'm going to get a little bit enthusiastic about this one. Unfortunately, there is a growing number of mental health concerns among kids, and there is more and more school violence, as I'm sure you're all aware. Much of this is perpetrated by unhappy students or students going through a difficult time. But fortunately, there is a lot that we can do about this. First and foremost, we're working on developing relationships and connectedness within our schools, among staff, among students. We take interest and we support everybody in our school at all levels. This looks different in kindergarten than it does in high school, but it's a key area of focus of our staff. In addition to helping to prevent violence, it also helps with better attendance, better achievement, choices about mental health and health needs, and so it's certainly something that's worth focusing on. And as you know, at each elementary level, we have RTI, Response to Intervention, that's provided in math and in reading. We also provide this for behavior. So each school is fortunate to have a full-time social worker and counselor who directly teach pro-social skills, such as recognizing and dealing safety safely with strong emotions. And this includes the use of the calming caddies, which you see in front of you, so you can take a peek at what's in there. These are like fidgets, like maybe you click your pen or you... These are like fidgets, like maybe you click your pen or you do something to kind of calm yourself. Students can also be taught to do this, and when they're having a strong emotion in class, they use these little tools. And we teach them how to use them. They really are very helpful and the kids know where they are in every class. Our, the professionals, these professionals along with our school psychologists, help students with good decision-making and supporting their individual student needs. All staff help teach problem-solving skills and use solution circles. And additionally, we've recently introduced restorative practices which enable both the victims and the perpetrators, if you will, to grow from negative interactions, which would help prevent these negative interactions from occurring in the future. Finally, all staff and students are encouraged to care for and to support each other. Everyone is asked to keep an eye on the safety and the well-being of everyone in their community, to provide support and to let trusted adults know when they think something is just not right. We know that a lot of this can be attributed, a lot of the problems can go right back to social media. So, while I have a couple of high school students here, I would just encourage you to please be wise with the use of social media. Don't do or say anything on social media that you wouldn't do or say to someone's face. That goes for everybody, not just kids, but since you're the ones we're talking about here, I'll address it to you. I'm now going to turn things over to Mr. Nolte, who will talk more about our facilities.
Well, I'm going to first talk about, it was last week or something, I had my five-year-old granddaughter over who was in kindergarten, and I asked her what she wanted to do, and she wanted to practice, I said, a lockdown drill. So, she described to me what she does in this lockdown drill, and I did not at all suggest anything, and I, it was, it was, it was pretty funny. I didn't, I didn't give her my presentation tonight, but, all right, I'm going to talk about some of the physical changes we've done in the school. A few years ago, we did a, an evaluation of all the entrances to the schools. We were specifically looking at ways that we could potentially improve upon a secured and controlled entrance. We kind of came up with three categories of improvements that we wanted to design around. The first being basically providing a second means of control. All right, right now, to get into a school, after we lock the doors, after the buses come in, we have a system where the main office can talk to whoever is visiting, find out what their business is, and basically buzz them in, all right? And then at that point, they, they enter the school. So, if we were able to contain them within a vestibule and get the lunch or finish the business, they don't have to enter the school, that's one of the goals, okay? So, providing a second means of control is, is, is one of the improvements. One, the second means of improvement would be providing security film. This is a film that you can put on entranceways, and it basically makes it extremely difficult to break a door or a window to get in, okay? And it's very easily applied, all right? So, that was another category of improvement. The last was potentially adjusting staffing. So, if we're going to create a secured vestibule reception area, we might have to move some staffing around. Certain schools are not oriented in a way that provides for this reception area like Glenmont, like Hammergrau, their offices are in a ways, okay? So, we, we came up with some suggestions there. So, we had this evaluation, and in the last budget, the board approved some funding, and we're going to be putting these measures in place at Slingelins and Eagle to start. Through the Bond project, I've actually provided you a copy of a rendition of what we're proposed going to do at the high school, creating an internal vestibule. It's, it's, it's right in front of your, right in front of you there. The pictures on the back are not, they're actually of another school district, but just to give you a sense of what we're talking about at the high school, it's one of our busiest, most visited places, but for something like that, that gains us a tremendous amount of control of who, who enters our school, we would move some staff from the main office out, out front to basically act as reception, okay? Another thing that we're doing at our entrances and, and has been in place, I want to say for about a year, is we have a raptor system. It's a visitor management system. Basically, anybody coming to any of our schools provides an ID, a driver's license. The ID is scanned, it goes into, and it's evaluated by this database, and the person is cleared. And then the system actually prints out an ID with your picture and then allows you to go through the school. And then another thing that we've been doing, you know, Schools Out uses our elementary schools for before and after care. We actually had a number of meetings with them to basically tighten up and, and just to help with this cause as well, and they've been very helpful as far as that goes. We've also done a number of items to improve classroom safety. The first is changing outdoor hardware, okay? Right now, basically, teachers need a key from their classroom to lock their doors, okay? And what we're doing is changing outdoor handles to an ADA handle with basically a push-button lock, okay? So, this is going to allow teachers to much, much quicker lock the doors in case, in case of an emergency. Throughout this process, in fact, I was just told that we just finished the high school today, but we are also rekeying certain schools to, and all the classrooms to have a general classroom key, okay? So, basically, a teacher, as an example, the high school is keyed by subject, and this was done years and years and years ago for whatever reason, but we are changing that to a general classroom key. So, wherever I am in the building, if something happens and a door's locked, I'm going to be able to get into that classroom, okay? This was one of the suggestions from one of our, our safety team meetings. So, these door handles are extremely expensive. This is, was planned to be a multiple-phase or multi-phase, multi-year effort. We put money in the budget last year and this year, so we are starting that process, okay? And I think by next year, we'll be all done, if not this year, okay? We're getting some great deals on locks because we're, we're providing so much, or we're buying so much. Classroom doors, most of the doors have, to classrooms, a quarter light or a window that allows somebody from the hallway to view in. So, what we ended up doing is we bought all these security shades which are, which meet fire code, which is basically rolled up on the window, and then if there was ever an issue, basically if we had to go to lockdown, the teacher just unrolls it and basically blocks, blocks the window. So, that was another, again, these are just small little items that we can do, so if you're in a classroom, you can't be seen in any way. The other thing that we did is provided some door wedges, okay? So, if we are in lockdown, you know, if you have to barricade the door, or we've provided all teachers these wedges, it's just another added means of security to, to basically lock yourself in. In each of the classrooms, teacher phones have been programmed to be able to dial 911 directly, which before might have been an 8911 or, or sometimes not at all, they had to dial the main office, so we were able to switch that out. And the other thing that we recently did was we have the ability to make a P.A. announcement from any classroom. They just have to dial a code, and then they can make a P.A. announcement. So, that was another item that was brought up from some of the safety team meetings, Security cameras through, I would say, I want to say the past number of years, past two bonds, and operating budgets, we now have basically cameras at every school building, at transportation, at O and M, both interior and exterior cameras. We have given police access to the system, and they can actually have a live feed if there was an emergency within the building. But I know that these have already been very, very beneficial to the building administration. So, this is, securing our schools is, is a continuous process we're always looking to do, to improve upon. One of the suggestions that came up from our safety meetings was establishing these blue strobe lights that you might see at some other schools. And basically, we would establish these on the exterior of buildings and maybe the interior larger spaces that might get loud with, with students, like cafeterias and gyms, and basically if we ever had to go to lockdown, although we're making an announcement, if you have a blue strobe going, if somebody's out on a playfield, they can, they can see what's going on and then they know what to do. So, this is something that we're, we're looking at as far as improving and putting in place. As Kate mentioned, we have done a reunification drill. Reunification is, is the process of, you know, if we can't bus students home after a situation and parents have to come, there's, there's very specific procedures and, and, and ways to deal with this, this, this situation. So, the logistics of where these different stations would be, if we had to reunify at the high school or the middle school, we're actually working on that. So, we're hoping to have that done by the end of the year, if not sooner. And then just another thing, we have school messenger. We're starting to use that more and more. We've talked about using that to activate it, activate the district-level safety team if there was a multiple-building situation. I'm using it now in my department even more to, to speak to my employees if there was ever an emergency, so we don't have to have a call tree and be on the phone for hours and hours, I can send one message out and get to my staff. So, so that's the physical improvements. I guess we'll go, any questions at this point for Kate or I?
Greg, I'm curious about the push-button lock. Typically, in a residential situation, a push-button lock means that all you need is a pin on the other side to open it, so the question is, how does this work? Can it be opened from the outside?
With a key.
So, it's a key on the outside but a push-button on the inside?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. The other question was, a single key, it sounds like you're going to have a single key that opens every classroom? Is that correct?
Yeah, a general, yes, a general classroom key. For a building.
Okay. So, hypothetically, what happens if a teacher loses a key or a couple of keys get lost? Does that mean the whole building has to be rekeyed? And at what cost?
We do that internally.
Okay.
But, I mean, it depends upon the magnitude of what we're talking about. You know, we, we will work with best, best access. If it's something of a huge magnitude, you know, maybe we'll order a certain key from them. If it's 120, 120 keys. But we have the ability to key things and change the core if need be.
And is there, is there any way to track the keys?
Yeah, I, my understanding, the keys are handed out, I'm not sure if, if at the elementary it's any different, but I know that the keys are handed out and turned back in at the high school. I think the keys are numbered, so the main office keeps track of who has number one, who has number two.
Okay.
I, I don't know if that is the same throughout the district. I just know that happens at the high school.
Jody, do you know?
Yeah, that's the, the process at the buildings.
For, for every building?
Everyone has to, is assigned a key, and then they're expected to turn it in for the, at the end of the school year or if needed.
Historically, if you know, how many, do you, have there been keys not turned in that you haven't been able to find at the end of the year?
I, if it's happened, I have not been, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. I, I'm just thinking that if one, if a student, the wrong student got hold of a single key, they would have pretty much unlimited access is what it sounds like. And while I understand the goal, and it sounds like a good one, there, there's a downside here that I'm wondering if it was considered or what can be done about it.
So, we, we talked about the pros and cons. Obviously, having, for example, at the high school, keys by department doesn't make a lot of sense because, you know, as Greg said, if there is an emergency and I'm in A-Wing and I don't have a key for that, most, I think the elementaries all are pretty much keyed. They have one lock, correct?
We're working.
Yeah, that's the goal. I, I guess I've gotten the wrong hands potentially. Anyone could get in a room. I guess the advantage of the cameras will help with that too.
So, any key can open, so if I have a key to that room over there, it opens that room and that room? So, no teacher has a lock that's just their own?
Yeah, so, we're going to design this that we'll have general classrooms, but then certain offices would have, you know, a different key, or tech areas would have, you know, a different key, or custodial areas, or exterior keys, okay? So, I know that when staff leaves, there are, there is an exit plan, and they have to turn in a number of things, including badges. And I know most of the buildings require, of course, the keys to be turned in. You know, the other thing now, Jonathan, is that we do have, you know, we have an intrusion system, so if it's after hours, you know, I'll pick you up for motion or anything like that, plus we have our cameras as well. So, if we, if we suspect foul play, you know, even during the day of, of this room, somebody coming into this room, we can always, you know, we can always check the video.
How much would it cost if we had to rekey, like the entire high school, if it's the same key for all the rooms?
The keys are cheap, okay? It's the cores, you know, and it's the, you know, the, the best cores. And again, we, we can do that, so there's actually no cost, all right? It's just time, 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 because it's, it's extremely intricate as far as how you core and pin a core, so.
So, do we have any of these right now, or we're converting to them?
We're, the high school has been converted as of today at, whatever, at 6:00.
And are we going to keep a, I know we're going to have a tracking system, but is there going to be somebody who's overseeing, like a periodic review to account for keys to ensure that at points in time?
Yeah, each building maintains their, their own keys. If they need something, they usually send, it's either a work order or an email to us indicating, indicating such.
I was just thinking, like an interval inventory, just to ensure the keys are where they should be periodically? I, I know, it just-
I mean, I guess if someone loses their key, they're not going to be able to get into their room. So, they'd have to report it.
And the keys don't get you into the building. They're only in a classroom.
Right, it's only for the classrooms.
So, and that's what we thought. It's, it, there's not a problem with a math teacher going into a social studies teacher's classroom. I mean, we haven't had any issues, at least to my knowledge, at all like that.
Okay. I'm just more concerned with inventory, just a periodic check to make sure that the keys are accounted for, just at the end of the year when people are retiring that they're here.
They're accounted for then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just with the, sorry, did you have another question? I apologize.
You can go first.
What?
You can go first.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you about the doors, because I know I'm a teacher, and that's, that's like the hardest part in a lot of these drills is just, you know, in order to lock your door, you have to go in the hallway, and it really kind of defeats the purpose of the drill if you have all the teachers standing in the hallway trying to lock a door. So, I think I just want to thank you, because that was what my question was going to be, and I think that's going to be huge in terms of the reaction time in each building.
This question is for Kate. I know when a lot of parents get the emails saying, oh, we did a lockdown drill today, it kind of, it gets at your heart a little, and a lot of people are concerned about what that looks for, like to kids. What is said to kids? What do they hear? And how is it explained? How is the purpose of this explained? Could you just go over that a little?
Sure. Well, in lockout drills, that, we're basically always in a lockout drill, so we don't really have any different protocol for that. For lockdown drills, we try to explain it in child-friendly language. I think most children, younger children, think that there's a wild animal in the school and we need- and we need to lock the doors to be safe. As children get older, more can be explained to them about why this might be necessary. And it is unfortunate, and it is scary, but it's something that we do need to, to practice for the student's safety.
Is it just the standard fire alarm that they hear, or is it something different?
When we have a lockdown, there's an announcement made. We just say lockdown, 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 this is a drill, so the students know that it's a drill, and, and the teachers as well.
Great.
It's not announced prior, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have just another question, I don't know, is there somebody else down there?
No, Meredith asked.
Sorry, go ahead.
Meredith asked my question.
Is there other technology that we don't currently use that other districts use? I was just curious as to what other technology there is, and do we not use it because it's not cost-effective? I was just curious what else was out there.
Saratoga has a lot of drills and a lot of meetings. They, they have implemented something that's called Navigate, and basically, it's a real-time database of your school, of, of, of every classroom, that law enforcement can actually look in, look at during a situation. It allows you to get into the camera system like I talked about, that's one funnel way, so, so they could see in, in real time, you know, what's going on in their schools. I'm not sure if it's something that would work well here. It's, it's, we're evaluating through BOSI's, there's Navigate, there's, there's, there's a number of organizations out there. I just don't know if it's, it, you know, life is constantly changing, I'm not sure how much it would be used, but we work with Bethel and PD on this. That's about the only thing that is like on my to-do list, to either say, you know, I think this is going to be good or not good, and, and, you know, we have a number of people kind of looking at this. But BOSI's is also involved with this as well, you know, giving us some advice. It's, they implemented it, and then they changed, and I'm not even sure if they're still using it, because there was another company that came in that they thought was a little bit better or user-friendly.
But it's something we might look at at a future time.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
Okay.
Going along with the locks, I was just thinking about technology, like our badges get us into the buildings, are there any schools that use the badges to get you into individual classrooms?
Yeah, so we don't have internal swipes. We do, like for the tech office server room, you know, high-security area, but generally, it costs a lot of money to outfit the door and the strike, you know, to, to basically have, have these, you know, we're, we're pretty good with, you talk about deactivating badges when teachers leave, you know, these, these do break at times. We're changing access and policies that we have written for these. We've recently given high school, middle school staff, teaching staff, access to the schools from eight to eight on Saturday and Sundays, if they want to come in and do, do school-related work. We already have that at the elementary schools, so, yeah, so these are, these are maintained pretty well.
Just on that suggestion, though, I'm a proponent of your suggestion, even if it's a little more costly, just because you, not that I'm not saying all teachers aren't trustworthy, but now you have teachers who have access to people's rooms, people's equipment. I know, I don't know what we do with cameras on the weekends, and just to make sure that there's, that we're ensuring-
I just want to clarify one thing on the keys, teachers have access to each other's rooms now. It's just by department. It's like all the math teachers can get into any math room.
Okay.
All the English teachers can get in it. So no one teacher has their own key.
Oh, okay.
So the issue is, if you have a math classroom right next door to a social studies classroom, the math teacher can open the math door, but not the social studies door. But in a lockdown situation, any student that's sort of straggling in the halls, you're supposed to grab and drag them into the closest classroom. And what happens if you're the math teacher that happens to be in the social studies wing? Now you can't pull that kid to any classroom or yourself, so now you're like running down the next hall trying to find a math room. So right, you know, right now, no one has their own key.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of taking-
That makes sense, too, the whole-
Instead of having departmental keys, there's just going to be general classroom keys, like science would still be keyed differently because of the lab component. Computer rooms would still be coded differently.
Okay.
Like the gymnasium would be coded differently. It's really just general-purpose classrooms.
Okay, that makes sense. And just another question, just quickly for Kate, is after you do the lockdown, 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 do you ever have students who freak out from that, and do you have to deal with that after you've done a drill?
On, we, if we have, I can't remember it, I think teachers are very good at communicating with their students and keeping them calm, but if it did happen in a school, we, like I had said before, we do have the mental health professionals, it's a coordinated care team, who could help students through that.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. At this time, if there are any visitors who would like to speak on an agenda item, please Next, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through eight.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? And, and I'll just thank all the different groups for their donations, there's a large number of donations on this list today. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through eight. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next is recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who would like to speak to the Board on a non-agenda item, please come forward. Item eight, future meetings and events. On Monday, January 27th, at 6:00 PM, we have a policy committee meeting at the high school. On Wednesday, January 29th, at 5:30, we have our Board of Education mid-year retreat at the high school. On Wednesday, February 5th, we have our next regular board meeting at the high school, will that be in the LMC? Maybe?
Hopefully.
Scheduled to start at seven, anticipating an executive session at six. The meeting following that will be on Wednesday, February 26th, also starting at seven, but anticipating executive sessions starting at six o'clock. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. And-